Can you hear me?
Yep.
All right, I had it on mute. So. I had. A really good time doing the study. So there's actually. We're going, we were supposed to cover a section. That is actually the gospel reading for Sunday, and we're not going to cover it. Because I'm stealing some of Chet Myers ideas to use in my sermon. So no point in talking to you guys about it now. When it'll just be my sermon, it just end up being a refresher for about half of it before I start interjecting my own ideas. There, is that what I should do? I should do it now and then you go. So you know what? I've done that before. And had people not know the answer to the question because they couldn't remember what we talked about in class. So that would be like a pop quiz that everyone failed. Um. But what we have here in. This section, I think what we're covering is. The end of chapter four, pretty much through chapter seven or chapter eight in the Gospel of Mark, not in Myers book. But what we have is kind of the expansion of Jesus ministry and the continuing. Of him laying out exactly what that's going to look like. And it begins, or we're going to begin. With Mark, chapter five, verses one through twenty-one. And that is the Garasine demoniac. And this one is pretty famous. For. A couple, well, I should say not famous, but it's well known. Does anyone know any, like when I say the Garasine demoniac? Does anything come to mind? Oh, really? I'll be honest, I said, no, this is the famous one with the pigs. So Jesus comes across this guy. He's been locked up for a long time. There's this duck. What? Oh. The herd of pigs. Okay, there we go. There we go. So if I called it the herd of pigs, then you would have known exactly what I was. The reason why we call it the Garasine demoniac is because it's a demon possessed person and you're a scene. So, or yes, swinebird. Um, and when we hear this story, what do we typically think? Like, as you hear this story, what do you make of it? Because I think we all know Jesus has this interaction with the man who's possessed. What does he say his name is? Legion, for he is many. And Jesus sends him in to the pigs, the swine, and what do they do? They jump, run off the cliff and into the water. So what do we make of this story? Before we get into what Chet Myers makes of this story. I mean, this is one of those stories, I think, for me as a preacher, when it comes up. You know, when I first read through it, I was like, what more can you say that hasn't been said? Like Jesus, you know? Jesus finds someone in need. He's not a Jew. He's a Gentile. You know, Jesus helps those in need. He commands power over demons. Um, but at first glance, it's a story that honestly, if it was in the text. That the gospel lesson that I would had to preach that something, I'd probably just go, no, I don't feel like doing that. Um, but if we dive a little deeper, as Chet Myers is going to force us to do. We're going to see that there's a lot more at play here. Um, than at first meets our modern eyes. So for one, to kind of set up. Geras, this Garasine region, um, it's about thirty miles away from the seaside, but it's still in that Galilee region. Um, and he encounters a demoniac. Welling among the tombs. Um, and this is a violation of Jewish ritual purity code, not only because the guy's possessed, but. Because hanging out around tombs, you're not supposed to be around dead bodies. You're not supposed to be hanging in graveyards. So this guy's multiple strikes when it comes to the Jewish purity code. Um, well, without. You know, this is not someone to allow in your vicinity. You don't want to touch them, nothing like that. But this guy. Comes up to Jesus. Um, it's also important to note that Herod Antipas, who is. The puppet king of Rome for this area of Palestine, actually has built his new capital city. Called Tiberias, which is after the Roman emperor of the time. So he's built this new city, this capital, Tiberias, and he can't get any Jews to move there because there's. Tombs everywhere, there's pigs, all these things that violate. Jewish ritual purity laws. He has to basically force or kind of make deals to get Jews to move to this territory because. From a religious standpoint, it violates a lot of this purity code. So this is the kind of area we're at. There's a lot of Gentiles, non-Jews in the area. Herod Antipas, who is a Roman puppet, has built this city and brought a bunch of Jews over. So you have the tensions of that. Um, Jew and Gentile now occupying the same space. I mean, it kind of seemed pretty. Like what's going on today, people being displaced, those types of things. So Jesus comes here and he has this encounter with this demon. And it should not be lost on us that the demon says its name is Legion. Because what is Legion? It does mean a lot. It means many, but what else is it? Okay, there's. It's a Roman military unit. Do you think it's a coincidence that this name is Legion? No. And when he casts out the demon, does he cast it into one pig? No, he cast it into a herd of pigs. So you might think, oh, that's interesting. Well, guess what? Pigs don't travel on herds. This wouldn't have been the term that they would have used for a collection of domesticated pigs. All right, this isn't the Greek term for that. It's not even the Greek term for a flock of sheep. The Greek term used here is most commonly associated with a band of military recruits. In marching formation. So we have Jesus casting out Legion into a herd, a parade of soldiers that then go off the cliff into the water. Now. Enemy soldiers being swallowed by water. What is that reminiscent of? The Exodus Pharaoh's army being washed away by the flood. This is absolutely an encounter that would have meant exactly what we just talked about to the people witnessing it. They wouldn't have just looked at it as we would today at first read where it's just like, oh, it's Jesus, you know? Casting out a demon into some pigs that then go into the water. They would have understood that in all of these interactions that this had. A double meaning. But there was symbolism here. We've talked about Jesus. Not outright. Saying things, but hinting at them. This is a hint. That everyone who witnessed it would have understood. And it's important because Herod Antipas has built his capital in this region and he is. The Roman face, so to speak, of their power. Everyone knows that Herod Antipas is the Roman puppet. So when they look at him, they know that's Rome's man. All right, he rules, he's here because Rome supports him. He is their chosen leader for us. He cares more about what they think and what they want than he does about our wants and our needs. So what is Jesus effectively saying he is here to do?
He's saying expel Rome?
He's saying. I don't think he's saying. Let's get together and expel Rome. I think what he's saying is I'm here to push back against the power of Rome. To push back against the power of this age. And this is upsetting to people because in this region. There had been an uprising about thirty years before Jesus. Before Jesus's time. Rome had handled it, put it down, raised entire villages. Killed all the men and taken the women and children into slavery. These are a people who know what happened. When you revolt against Rome. So when Jesus comes and starts. Talking about legions thrown into pigs and being drowned in the water. They're like, dude, you gotta go. Like, we know the history of what happened here. We know what Rome will do to us. You need to leave. All right? But what we have here is Jesus, he's in, he's encountered. Religious leaders, um, in Jewish territory, and now he is traveling out into Gentile territory. And he is confronting not Gentile leaders, well, I guess Gentile leaders, but Rome, the center of the power structure. Um, so it should not be lost on us that this is Jesus first. First encounter in which he pushes back against the Roman state and its occupation of the land of Palestine of Israel. That's something honestly, as I've. Read this story. Preached on it, I'd never encountered that until I read Myers book. Um, he's one of the only people that kind of lifts this up. Now, as I've done more reading, I see that other people talk about him. But this is kind of a unique perspective that I, I think is very interesting, um, the way he unpacks this and helps us. Better understand. Um, but. Why? I think the question that this brings up is why is that pushback against power? Even a power that's not seen can be so terrifying, not just for these people, but for all of us. Like pushing back against this, this power that we can't see that we know exists. Why does that make us uncomfortable? As God comes to an. As God comes to encounter something. That oppresses us, why does that make us uncomfortable?
Fear of the consequences.
Fear the consequences? I mean, we should have a different understanding than the people at this time, right? We know Jesus died. By the hands of the Roman state, but that he was raised. Why do we still then feel so uneasy when it comes to God? Basically standing against the powers that be.
It's human nature to be wary of what's ahead. And you don't know what it is. You know, you know what you got today. You know, you may not like everything about today, but it feels right. You know what you're gonna do about it. You get outside of that, to the unknown. It's just a natural human. Fear of it. Make a step in your comfort zone or your known zone, whatever you live.
I've always. I've always found that there's something about all of us. Where we all have this internal dialogue when it comes to encounters, decisions, is the juice worth the squeeze? So as God comes out to meet. Rome and all that's power. As God comes out to meet those forces unseen that exist. Um. We have this internal dialogue of. Is the juice worth the squeeze? And I think what we are gifted that the people here aren't is faith. Now, can that faith tell us that the juice is absolutely worth the squeeze? Um, but I think we all. We all instantly go to, what will I lose? If Jesus stays here, if Jesus goes through with that, it instantly becomes a. What will I lose compared to what will I gain? Um, and I think ultimately, as we continue to go on. Through this book and through Mark. We have to ask ourselves the question. Is that the most important thing? Is it really about what I lose and what I gain? As just being the material here and now? Because. If it's just the material, if it's just what happens now, following Jesus is absolutely a juice that is not worth the squeeze. It's not. Because Jesus provokes. Jesus is going into places intentionally upsetting people and talking about something that's very counter-cultural. That's very against the status quo, very against the powers that be, that where Jesus goes, there is conflict and there is challenge. Because all he's doing is talking about the kingdom of God. And what that does, that says the way we're doing things isn't right and needs to change. So as we continue on, I want you to kind of have that internal dialogue within yourself. Is the juice worth the squeeze? What would I have to sacrifice in that situation? Um, and I think that's a very important thing for us to be cognizant of as we reflect on some of these encounters that Jesus does have.
Um. Did this happen? After John was put in prison?
We'll get there. It's interesting where John's execution and where all of that stuff occurs within what it is. That is happening with Jesus because we're going to spend. I don't, I can't say right now, but we're going to spend a fair amount of time talking about what John's execution means and the ministry of Jesus when it happens.
I was thinking more in terms of putting John's maiden prison. On their minds, whether John would value it or it's at work.
I definitely think. That there is. John's not the only one. John was not the first to. John's not an outlier, like he all of a sudden came out of nowhere. There's a lot of evidence that there were people like John saying things like John said. John was just the one who. Finally captured the hearts and minds of people and really began to bring them out. And the same thing happened to them that happened to John. So everyone knows that if you go down this path. It typically has a very unfortunate ending for you. Um, this is why Jesus, I mean, John knows, Jesus knows, the life. The life expectancy of a prophet at this time is not long. Once you begin your prophetic ministry. You, you should start counting your life in, uh, in months, um, not years. So it, the idea that. I think we're gonna, I think we're gonna see this a little bit with the disciples as we kind of go on. Them asking themselves the question, is the juice worth the squeeze? Because Jesus is gonna act counter to a lot of their beliefs and understandings. It's gonna put them in danger. Um, so you can tell that they're having these kinds of questions in and of themselves. Uh, um, there. Some people do, some people don't. I mean. When Jesus has that discourse on divorce and they ask the question like, well, if. You know, this lady marries one brother and he dies, marries the next one and next one, who is she married to in heaven? They're making fun of Jesus, saying, you believe in the afterlife? Like, come on, dude, that's stupid. Um, this kind of understanding that there's a life after, um, and Judaism, like life is the gift you're given. But there are a lot of different understandings of. Afterlife. Life and death. I mean, to say that there's just two groups or just one group, you couldn't. Because most Gentiles believe in an afterlife. Um, so one of the things, some of the. In Jewish understanding, one of the things they were having to set themselves apart. Was that there is no clear understanding of an afterlife besides there's life and there's death. Um. So you have these two kind of foundational understandings, but. Jewish study produces a lot of different results out of those two things.
So we necessarily make them part of the juice.
It depends on who Jesus engages with, but he definitely engages with people who would have not believed that there was an afterlife. So some of the things Jesus is saying. Will mean more to other people just based on that ideological belief, like that foundation of their faith. Um. We've already had one exorcism. In chapter one, and chapter one and chapter five are related. Um, Jesus enters into a new territory and it's a symbolic region. First one is a Jewish region, this one, a Gentile region, region. They both. They're both symbolic and significant for their own reasons. Um, Jesus has this verbal confrontation. He overcomes the challenge and the response to what he does is what? I would say it's twofold, amazement and fear. That those two things kind of go hand in hand when Jesus enters into these areas. He almost always has this. Hey, here I am, this big show, and the response is usually like, wow, and oh. And like, it's kind of that two-handed, like. That's really crazy that he can do that. And that's also slightly terrifying. Some of the things he's saying could get us in trouble. Um. But I want to read, um. This section from Binding the Strong Man. Um. And it calls this a cathartic response of this subjugated. Um, the tension between his hatred for his oppressors and the necessity to repress this hatred. In order to avoid dire recrimination drove him mad. He retreated to an inner world where he could symbolically resist Roman domination. Jesus's disruption of the prevailing accommodation. Brought the man's and the neighborhood's hatred of the Romans out into the open. Where the result could be the, a disaster for the community. So what this is saying is that this man in some ways is symbolic of the repressed fear. Of the entire community. That he is. It's, it shouldn't be lost on us that can anyone subdue him? No, I make, it specifically raises that point. No one was able to bind the man for he had broken his shackles. Many times, there was no one strong enough to master him. And as we've talked about, at the name of the book as well. Binding the strong man. It is only when Jesus comes and you have this man oppressed by Rome who's. Basically the embodiment, the repressed fear of it. No one has been able to liberate him from this. And here comes Jesus. And proves himself to be one who is strong enough to bind, to shackle, to liberate. Um, this is. I mean, we're not, I'm not kind of working you guys up for my sermon, um, a little bit, but this is something that we should, um. Take note of. Uh, it's actually. Pretty understood in antiquity that. Oppression by a foreign ruler was in some ways kind of a possession by a foreign spirit. Some ways, a foreign spirit was possessing your entire land. And your, your entire people. The suppression from this outside power. Um, so that's something that was. That's something that wouldn't have been lost on people, the idea that you could be possessed by the foreign spirits of another nation that has control over your land and over you. Um. You know, this coincides with the idea of the mustard seed. Um, this tiny community would overgrow the tall tree that was Rome. Kind of this reversal of fortune, which is kind of where we're moving ourselves. Into the idea that the first will be last and the last will be first, though the one who is least is actually greatest and the one who's greatest is actually least. Which is where we're going. Um. Mark reassures us in no uncertain terms that the healed man was none other than the very man. Who was oppressed by Rome, the dominant order will be destroyed. This is Jesus challenged Roman power. The question for us is what power or what powers of the age oppress people today? What oppresses us? What are the towering trees in our world today? I don't know if that's necessarily a question. You all need to answer right now, but I think it's a question you all need to think about. Um. I. I have ideas. I know what some of those towering trees are that I see from my point of view. But I think where each and every one of us. Comes from, where we stand, where we are in this world, those towering trees might look different. Um. But I think it's important for us to think about what are those powers of the age that Jesus still needs to bind? Because that work is not yet done. What tall trees need to be cut down? What seeds need to rise? Um, I think that's going to play into kind of. Some of, as we go on in our study today, as we go on, um, what I'm going to preach about on Sunday. Idea of what are these powers that are working against us or that God is working against? Um, and I think we need to be able to name those. Um. Because for Jesus came not to just battle invisible demons. Jesus came to challenge the status quo of the power of the day. Um, and that has not changed. God's kingdom stands in opposition to these things. Um, now it's for, I mean, this is some of the best. Stuff in all of the gospels, the crossings. The sea crossings. Now, first of all, let me tell you, I've seen the Sea of Galilee. There are. Hundreds of lakes, if not thousands of lakes in the United States that are much bigger than the Sea of Galilee. No contest whatsoever. It is, you could see across them. I mean, it's far, I wouldn't try and swim that, I'd drown. But you could see across to the other side. But it is in an area that is susceptible to, to wind, to storms. Um. Their boats are not what we have today. Um, so sea crossings still can be dangerous. Um, and it just so happens that there's drama around the, the passages that Jesus and the disciples and the disciples have. Um. Jesus in the first passage, what is he doing? Does anybody remember first passage? He's sleeping. Jesus is asleep in the boat and a storm starts to rise. And what do the disciples do? They wake him up and they say, don't you care? We're all gonna die. Or don't you care that we're dying? You have to do something. They're all panicking. They're all startled. Wake Jesus up. Why is he sleeping? How can he sleep through this? Um, and in some way, Mark wants us. To take note of this and be aware. Um. That in some ways, this is part of the purpose of their journey. This is in some ways kind of a test or a challenge to their faith. Um, how will they respond in face of this disaster, this storm? Do they trust that Jesus will get him over to the other side? Or will they panic and be terrified? And they fail. They fail this test. And once again. As they are heading out into this new region, into this new space. The disciples are still people who relatively. Don't have faith. They follow Jesus, but time and time again, they fail to understand what it is he's saying. They fail to believe. What he's saying, that they're constantly. Pushing back against what he says, that they're constantly not putting it into practice when those times comes. Jesus interests them. There's something about him. They know they want to follow and to learn from. But they still, when the rubber meets the road, lack the faith. To trust that Jesus is who he says he is and that he's going to do the things that he says he's going to do. So. It's not. It should not be lost on us that. The sea is a place of testing. Um, water has a lot of different imagery and purposes in scripture. Um. But one thing, the people of Palestine, of Israel of this time. The sea was representative of chaos. It was primordial. It was terrifying. It was scary. Um, that's where monsters lived, you know? Bahamut and Leviathan, if you remember, those of you who came to the Revelation Bible study, most of the monsters came out of the sea. Um, so it was a place. That humanate, humans could not conquer the sea, the sea was its own beast. So anytime God has a miracle with. Ocean, sea, lake, water, rivers, that's God establishing dominion over even chaos. Um, so what we have right here is Jesus doing this and essentially saying. I have the authority that God does, I command even the chaos, I command even the waters. You know, there's plenty of different. Um, verses and songs that talk about God using water, um, but I think one of the most famous. Um, texts about water and storms is probably Jonah. Jonah's trying to escape God and he's in this boat and all of a sudden the storms roll in and. Jonah says, yeah, I believe in God and he's pretty mad and what do they do? Toss him out of the boat, get him out of there. Um, it is a place of challenge. Um, and what we can see here in this crossing is that the disciples have been challenged. And they have failed and Jesus questioned for them is, do you not yet have faith? And even after, even after Jesus steals the storms. The disciples ask, who is this? That even the sea and the wind listen to his commands? So they've been with Jesus now this entire time of his ministry. He has just calmed a storm on the water, he has told them to have faith and their response is. Who is this that even the sea and the wind listen to his commands? And this echo, this wonderment kind of echoes the synagogue when Jesus is doing miracles. Um, and it kind of accompanies all these crowds that interact with Jesus. But what's important to note is that a lot of these people are interacting with Jesus the first time. The disciples have been with Jesus more and more as we go and will constantly not get it. Now there's the second crossing and what's unique about the second crossing that was different from the first. Is that Jesus sends the disciples alone. So if you've had a bad experience crossing the, the lake, the Sea of Galilee. You've had a bad experience with Jesus in the boat. How are you gonna feel when you're going out on the boat by yourself? You're gonna feel pretty anxious and Mark, Jesus, try and get us to understand the spatial distance. Jesus forced them to go on ahead while he dismissed the crowd. Jesus went up into the hills to pray. The boat was far out to sea while Jesus was alone on land. There is a distance between Jesus and the disciples and what happens? The winds came again and what do the disciples do? They panic. They cry out, they're terrified and then what happened? Jesus walks on water. And perhaps even more importantly, who does Jesus say that he is? Is I, um, so this is. The. Moses Burning Bush, yes, who am I speaking to? And what does God say through the burning bush? I am. And what the translation actually is in Hebrew is I am the I am. And what he says in Greek here is egoimi, which is I am the I am. So he echoes the language of. God through the burning bush, says exactly, I am God, I am the I am. So right here, the disciples are in need, they're panicking again, Jesus walks to them on the water. Claims says, I basically takes God's name. I am the I am.
Do they understand that?
Yes. Every Jew would know exactly what he just said. That would be something children. Children would know what Jesus was saying there. But what, what happens to the disciples or what is their response? Or how does Jesus reproach them? What is it, what does Jesus say to them after everything's settled down, after he says the I am?
Don't be afraid.
We hear that their hearts are hardened. In some ways, their hearts are like their opponents. And once again, who is this reminiscent of? Pharaoh. Jesus claims, I am the I am, Jesus, God, Exodus, liberation. The great story of the Jewish people, um, and then. The response to this is hard hearts, hardened hearts, stubborn hearts, hearts unwilling to have faith.
So you just said how it was that they had believed right before this is. They not understood about the love, so they just already did the. Jesus fed them five thousand, so. So what do they think that was, that they, they didn't think it was a miracle or they're just like. People really had fish and bread, they just didn't.
We're gonna talk about it. What that.
They just couldn't have their heads around it, like they just.
They still don't. So we're gonna talk about the miracle, hopefully we make it there in class, it is important. But what, they don't know what to make of Jesus because he. In some ways, he is what they expect him to be, but he also isn't what they expect him to be. He does things that just. Don't make sense to them. Like it, I think, I don't think we can really understand that him engaging with the demon. In the region of Garrison, like how? Just off the wall, that would be for someone claiming what Jesus was claiming. Like for him to challenge and speak in those ways, but then also have this kind of deference in this leaving and escaping. Like, just. As they think they begin to understand what it is that he's doing. They suddenly find themselves totally unaware of what he's talking about. The signs are there. But he's not doing what they would expect him to be doing. Um, so there's something there that pulls them in, that wants them to kind of, how does this story end? They have to be wondering, they have to be, how does, how is this gonna end up playing out? You know, they know they're on the roller coaster as it's going up, where it's going, they don't know, which is I think why they stay around. There's something about this Jesus guy. But they don't know what it is, that's the entire struggle for the disciples in Mark, they don't know who Jesus is. Despite being ones who spend more time with him and we're gonna talk about it when. All right, we'll get there, but we're gonna talk about how Jesus will encounter someone for the first time. And essentially give them status above the disciples because that person gets it and they don't. Basically, he's basically rubbing it in their faces. I've seen this lady for two minutes, she gets it, you dummies don't, like. They will just be constantly, in some ways, they are representative of all the people who want liberation. But can't. Can't bring themselves to believe in God, believe in Jesus, that he is the Messiah. That just the stories they hear don't quite fulfill their expectations. So. In some ways, Mark's writing, the disciples are representative of everyone who is hearing these stories and not. Really having faith, believing. Um, this is for them and it's for us because we weren't there, we weren't able to follow Jesus, we weren't able to encounter.
Did the rabbi back in those days? Sort of feed into the fact that. A child was gonna come and overthrow the Romans?
I mean, it wouldn't have, so the rabbinical tradition. You know, it will come out. Um, it's still quite small, but the Jewish thinking would be. That if Jesus was who he says he was in the line of King David, he would reestablish the kingdom. Which would mean the expulsion of the Romans. It would mean him rebuilding, yeah, well. Temple hasn't been destroyed again, but him taking his seat on the throne, the temple being brought back into its glory. Um, much as we would expect from any fictional story or, you know, history of us winning against the oppressor. Or, you know, those things, that's the expectation. Um, and Jesus disciples definitely are in that mindset, they think that's what Jesus is gonna end up doing. Cause they like some of this revolutionary language and we talked about in a previous class. There are people following Jesus who are very in that, a war's coming, we're here for it. Is this Jesus guy somebody we can get behind, is he somebody we can use? Like, there are all different types of eyes looking at Jesus, trying to make sense of what it is he's doing. He's just gonna not do what any of them were expecting, um, which is kind of. What God does. It defies expectations and wants and desires. Um. Another thing is, is. You know, Jesus is going back and forth between Jewish and Gentile regions and this. You know, here's another one of those, you know. Palestine, you know, what's happening in Israel between Palestinians and the, and the Israelis. Jesus here is trying to establish that the kingdom is not just for Jews. That there is already this outreach and this kind of. Bringing together this racial reconciliation between Jew and Gentiles, between Jews and Samaritans. Um, that Jesus is trying to say that the kingdom is for all people, there is nothing that separates us. Which is something Paul is gonna pick up on heavily, you know, there's neither Jew nor Greek. Slave nor free, like all are one, all are equal in the kingdom of God. And by Jesus kind of bouncing back and forth between Jewish regions and Gentile regions, like. He is putting his disciples, he's almost like taking them to areas like, oh, you know. We can't go there, that's scary, you know, we're Jews, they're Gentiles, we shouldn't be over there, Jesus, we shouldn't be hanging out there. Like, it's not safe for us. Um, and Jesus is just, oh, no, we're going, come on, follow me, here we go. So there's this, you know, there's this deep anxiety for them, the disciples as they follow Jesus, like, we're not, we don't feel welcome here. Um. And the Gentiles are looking at Jesus and the disciples like. Who are you? Why are you here? What are you talking about? So there's this kind of Jesus trying to bridge the gap of seeing people as people. Um, seeing as those, someone is in need. They're just someone in need who needs God, who needs Jesus's power, you know, this encounter. Which is what we're gonna talk about when we get to, um, gyrus and. Actually, that's what I'm gonna preach now, so we might not get right there. It kind of seems strained at this point for Myers that like, this is partially about racial reconciliation. So I guess we'll go ahead and talk a little bit about what I'm gonna preach about on Sunday. Um. It's really important for us to understand honor and shame culture. Um. Does anyone, have you ever heard of honor and shame? Has that ring any bells whatsoever? So the easiest introduction for us. Is social class. Okay, honor and shame. The best comparison we have today is your social class. It's not the same thing, but it's the best thing we have to understand. This is not just a Jewish. This is an antiquity thing, Rome had an honor and shame culture, Israel had an, almost every. Culture in antiquity has their own honor and shame. Kind of cultural, you know, social understanding. Yeah, in some ways, it's like a caste system, like, I mean, it's like a caste system, it's like social class, but. It's different than what we have today and it's different than a caste system. Um.
This sounds over and over again, it sounds that the speaker is talking about. Don't put your place of shame in front of all the people in the congregation. Remove the shame from my family, admit it, it's all, all over, I hope it just keeps coming up, coming up, coming up, that it was. Undermine, that's, that's, I was gonna use it for now.
I think shame in the age of the internet and the age of social media has become increasingly more prevalent. Cause it's far easier to shame people, again, there's a lot of power, um. Um, and it's easy today to be able to shame someone from behind the screen with a, you know, a username. Those aren't things that happen face to face anymore, that's something that can just happen on the internet.
My impression from some of the signs is that it's something that fixes itself now and you, but to your family and everybody.
Yeah.
The outcast should be ashamed of themselves.
So that, the powerful thing for us to understand about shame and why it's relevant here. And how it's relevant for us today. You should absolutely feel like God wants you, I don't think wants you because he doesn't want us to sin, but God wants you to feel guilty. To some extent, like God wants you to repent. For the sins that we've done, like God, that guilt is a necessary part of Luther. It's one of the uses of the law is so that we feel guilty and we'll have a repentant heart. Shame is not, guilt is, I've done something bad, I feel bad that I've done something bad. Shame is, I've done something bad, therefore I'm bad. It's this internalization, your sins in some ways begin to define you. Shame in this context is kind of like that. You are a shameful person, you are bad. And there's, in some ways. In this time, there's no way to escape that. Like, once you are shamed, if you are in those, the bottom levels, there is nothing, nothing you can do to escape. If you're up in the higher echelons, if you're a person of honor who is shamed, there is. The ability to rise back up, to cleanse your name, just cleanse your family's name. But for those who start in shame, there is no leaving, there is no escape, there is no way out. Um. He has in here, to understand the social functions of this story. Um. The structure and maintenance of social standings of persons and groups in antiquity, different. Differed from ours. But from a symbolic point of view, honor stands for a person's rightful place in society. Okay, honor stands for your rightful place in society. This honor place is marked off by boundaries. Boundaries consisting of power, sexual status and possession on the social ladder. Honor is a claim to worth along with the social acknowledgement of worth. So you can claim, I have honor, I am worthy, other people will look at you and say. Yes, you do. Right, that's what it means to have honor, whether somebody likes you or not, they still have to be able to acknowledge, yes. You have that, we, somebody in your class, we are equals. Like, this is necessary for the culture to function, there has to be this honor that we share. Um, it is polite, it is civil. To act in this way, if you are a person of honor, to acknowledge someone else's honor, someone else's worth. Um, it's a social rating scale, so to speak. Um, for honor has a individual and a corporate and a collective dimension. Going into business with somebody with good honor is safe, it's good, it gives you honor that someone with a better honor than you would do business with you. Like, it provides, it opens all doors, the higher your honor is, the more doors that open. And obviously, if you're a shameful person, you don't have that. Because an honored, an honorable person can be shamed by associating with you. Does that make sense? It goes on to say, shame in this context refers to a person's sensitivity about what others think, say. And do with regard to his or her honor. Natural groupings have collective honor and shame, but in the moral division of labor. Honor and shame becomes sexually specific. honor and shame becomes sexually specific, sexually embedded. The male is to defend both corporate honor and any female is subject to this honor system. Um, the female, on the other hand, symbolizes the same shame aspect of the corporate honor. That positivity, that sensitivity to the good repute of individuals in group. So in some ways it's really tough to be a woman. I mean, tough today. It's been tough for a long time, but it was it was way worse than you. But in some ways you could say it's hard to shame a man and it's hard to bring them further and further down the ladder, but a woman could drag you down really fast. So your daughter's acting right, your wife acting right. This is why women were stoned for committing adultery. Like this was necessary to reestablish honor. Because she's shamed. Um, the family, she has shamed our name. Um, that must be rectified. This is why we do this thing. It should not be lost on us. That Jesus is about to have a number of encounters with women. Because in the honor and shame society, the most vulnerable and the most shamed people are women. And that is what will happen in chapter five with the healing of the woman who is like our gospel lesson for Sunday. I'll go ahead and give you a little bit of insight so you can maybe tune out for the first half of my sermon. Make sure you listen. Maybe I'll put it in there. Make sure the uh, Sunday school people start listening here. There, I probably will. So what we have I think it's chapter five, verses twenty one through forty three. That's so what we have is a man. Tyrus who comes to Jesus and says what? My daughter's dying. What just happened was a culturally appropriate conversation between two men of relatively the same honor. Tyrus has every right to go to Jesus and say, hey, I need your help. My daughter's sick. Could his daughter do that? Hey, Jesus, I'm sick. No. But Tyrus and Jesus are on that same level. Hey, can you help me out? You know, man to man, one of honor to one of honor. Can you do this for me? And Jesus says what? Let's go. I'll do this thing. So while they're walking, there's a bunch of people. Bunch of people around and this woman comes and all of a sudden, Jesus feels it says, he feels a power has left him. Um, so the woman has this internal dialogue that if I go and I just touch his cloak, I will be healed. She has not done what is culturally appropriate. She is the epitome of someone who is shamed. And Mark wants you to clearly understand that she is at the bottom. Having been with a flow of blood for 12 years. Woman on her period at this time, wasn't even allowed to be in the house, basically. This woman for 12 years. Having suffered much under the care of many physicians. She's obviously so sinful, so broken, so shameful. You can't heal her. Having spent all her money and means. So not only that, but she's poor as dirt. Which is another strike on the shame board. And having not benefited, but instead grown worse. This woman is doubly poor and doubly outcast. Like double down on everything that can make you someone who is shamed. She is shamed. By trying to have any encounter with Jesus whatsoever was enough to be stoned. Was enough to become even more ostracized than she ever was before. But she's desperate, she says. You know, with this hope, maybe even if I just touched the cloak, his cloak. And she's healed. And Jesus stops, you know, he's supposed to be going helping the guy on his levels, like he's supposed to be doing this guy who he should based on the honor and shame society culture. He should go help this guy by healing his daughter. But now he's stopped by someone that has no right whatsoever to ask anything of Jesus. She's been healed. Jesus stops. Has this long, you know, who touched my cloak? The disciples are like, nothing, man. Come on, we gotta go heal Jairus's daughter. Like, let's go. Jesus searches her out. And he will have this conversation. And he will lift her up above his disciples. What does he tell her? He claims her as daughter. In some ways, my daughter, my child. Your faith has healed you. He doesn't call the disciples his sons. He doesn't lift up their faith at any point so far, but here this woman who had no right whatsoever to engage him in any way but does. And Jesus' response to that is not get out of here, scum, or you, you can't do that. It's daughter. Your faith has healed you. In some ways, it's not what I did. It's what you did. This thing that is dishonorable and wrong. That is what's healed you. And he claims her. Now, while all this is happening, what else happens? Tyrus's daughter dies. So here we have Jesus saying he'll do this thing for one of his social rank, instead stopping on the way to help someone. All the while being this thing he was supposed to be doing, she's now died. So in some ways, this is a strike to what? To Jesus's honor. He said he was going to help someone out. He got distracted. She died. Jesus didn't come through. He's a man of honor. He should have gone straight there. He should have healed her like he said he was going to do. So everyone is kind of like bemoaning, um, you know, oh, she's died. Yeah. And once again, you know, people say this at the end. All right, she's dead. There's nothing you can do. And Jesus' response to this is what? And then he goes
to the house.
And what does he say? What does he do? Then what does he do? He touches her. She's dead. You don't touch dead people. Once again, another strike to Jesus's Jesus's shame, you know, he's a man of honor. Here he is. He didn't come through when he said he was gonna do. He didn't do the thing he promised to do. He just touched a dead girl. But all of a sudden, she's restored to health. So what we have, and I think it's important for us to understand, and this is kind of, kind of gonna be where my I think it's the thing we have to wrestle with. Jesus is coming for everybody. But he's coming for those in need first. Like he will stop on the way to help someone that he sees is in need. Um, he's going to save this woman um, from where she is, from all of her afflictions, the cultural ones, the physical ones. He is going to lift her out of every poverty she has. That she's gonna be a person that can be invited into someone's house. She's going, her social status is totally returned to her this way. Um, she's gotten her life back, not just her health. She's gotten everything back, so to speak. And just when, you know, there's this belief that, oh, well, he helped her, but now this one's died. Like there's a limitation. Jesus steps beyond that. And what this is supposed to inform us, okay, get into the end. What this is supposed to do to inform us is that every time every expectation we have that God will not step over that or God cannot do that. Jesus will. And that's kind of the tone for Jesus in his ministry. His disciples will think, you can't do that. Or that can't be done, or you shouldn't do that. Like Charlie right now. Don't touch the power cord. Don't touch it. Like it's every time you, they tell Jesus this can't be done. Cause it's impossible, or you shouldn't do this because it'll bring you shame. Jesus is like, oh, really? Did it? There is that like open pushback every time. And even here, the impossible. Well, Jesus can't help her now. She's dead. He goes showing the scope of his ministry. That Jesus is here not only for those on his social status, those who have privilege and power, but also those at the bottom. And what this speaks to and what I think I'm really gonna try and hammer home in my sermon is that this speaks to both, I think, the kingdom to come and the kingdom present today as being two very important hand in hand things. We cannot be a church or a people that thinks this gig is only about where we end up at the end. It has to be a church that sees right in front of us the kingdom, the reality of someone who will stop in hell, who sees injustice, who sees systems that need to be pushed back on and will engage them. Full well believing that when we reach the end and when someone says, oh, they're dead. Or oh, it can't possibly be changed now. God steps in and carries, keeps carrying us forward. So that kind of lifts in this, God can save us. The kingdom is present and can lift us out of that chain. That guilt, those systems that keep people oppressed or broken, like the kingdom for them can exist today. And also God's still working. Um, that even in death, we find life. So it's kind of the dual nature of Jesus ministry we see right here. Like he's here to help people today. And at the end like Jesus is doing both. So the thing that the church should only be concerned with one is to miss the, miss the point of what Jesus is doing. All right. So we didn't even make it all through chapter five because the feeding is something we're gonna talk about in our next class. I actually think that's one of the most pivotal points um, in Jesus's ministry for us today. What happens in that interaction? And I'm essentially gonna tell you, I think part of it in this particular key, he feeding story. Jesus is telling people to share. There are miracle stories. There is the miracle of the feeding. But I think in this one, we're gonna talk about in this section of Mark, I think it is absolutely Jesus saying if you got some, give some to your neighbor, that Jesus is telling people to share. Um, that Jesus kind of brings it together as people's giving even when they don't think they have it not. Uh, which is culturally especially for people who are poor. Um, all right. So we will finish the rest of that chapter. I can't even see the screen. It's so dark. You got anything, Jerry?
Nope. Good session.
Alrighty. Well, I'll see you. Oh. Next classes. So Janus is going on vacation. And when I was telling her on my way out, we're having class on the 11th of July on the eighth of August and on the 22nd of August.
So not July twenty fifth?
Not July twenty fifth. I have to go to New Orleans for national youth gathering. We come back and I have to preach, like it's just gonna be a lot to do before I leave and a lot to do when I get back. I'm not sure my notes, I'm not sure I'll have enough time to be able to get class ready for the twenty fifth. July 11th is our next class and then August 8th and August 22nd. They're sending out like heated vicaries to people already. Yeah, I, I maybe I will, maybe, maybe that's what I should do that. Getting prepared for Jesus.